Okay, Mark, it's, uh, it's thirty, sorry. Call to meeting order. Uh, approval of the minutes of one, three, twenty-three. That can't, that's not right, Mark, it's one, three, twenty-four.
I inadvertently forgot the minutes in the packet also, so there's two titles.
They're not in there?
They're not in there, so we'll have to wait until next week.
Next week, next month.
Yep.
Outreach.
Doesn't it?
Hi, I'm Jason Jacobin, I'm the new outreach coordinator, and just a quick brief on what's been going on, and writing up the 2023 annual report, and taking different, worried about my job, and going to my first transfer station tomorrow, so, um, coming along fine, and we're doing a lot of social media to try and keep people abreast of just reminders of recycling and composting and things like that. I guess that's about it.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Mark, you still there?
I am, Brianna's coming up right this second.
Okay.
Um, so just as a general update, um, in the next few weeks, we're gonna start our co-mingled recycling program. So, as of tomorrow, the catwalk is gonna be built, so we'll be able to have the customers come out on the catwalk to do their recycling, is the general consensus of the idea. And so instead of source separating the ones and twos and fives, the customer will be able to dump everything into one container, and hopefully it'll make it a little bit more efficient for our customers, which will be nice. Employee training, I have been working with some of the newer employees to do a waste management training, basically to get them acquainted with different types of waste programs and streamline what we do at the transfer station, basically. I'm also gonna be having everyone do a video training from the Northeast Resource Recovery Association, which goes over different safety aspects the general transfer station operator should keep in mind. So, and I'm also gonna develop some questions that follow along with this, just to make sure everyone understands everything. And then also, I met with Steve Wilk today at the transfer station, and we walked around and just got a general idea of some of the repairs that might need to be made on the road. So he's gonna be giving me an estimate in the next few days about different options we could do to repair some of the deterioration, but, yep. I'll give an update probably next meeting about the costs and everything, and what we have for options, but, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Mark?
Yeah, the next item, number four, you're gonna see on the next page is the appointment form for the annual ritual of having this filled out and sent to me, so we can keep this as a record, who's gonna be on the board, hoping we're gonna get everyone to return, and fill some gaps, the ones that are out here. If you can get that into me as soon as you can, that'd be great, and I'm also gonna be sending it out to your appointing authorities, managers, administrators, and clerks and so forth like that, to see that they have it for the next meeting. Next item is with Greg, with the financials on page five.
So, one of the pieces of the financials got left out of the book inadvertently. We've got the balance sheet for the MRF in there twice. And one of the things I want to highlight, the balance sheet for the general fund, is that we've got basically the equity section broken out, so that it shows the capital improvement plan, projects. Each one has its own account, basically showing what we've got set aside for each project as of twelve thirty-one twenty-three. So. In the upcoming years. Anyway, the, the, for the general fund right now, one hundred and seventy million. Total liabilities are at six hundred ninety-five thousand, so, basically even total of about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The income statement for the general fund, revenues are at about a hundred and seventy-four thousand, which is about thirty-one hundred fifty thousand dollars higher than last year at this time, this is for the month of January. Total revenues from January, uh, total expenses from January were a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, leaving us with revenues over expenditures of six thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. So, about seven dollars higher than what we were at last year in terms of revenue over expenses. So, we're in good shape, it's only one month out of the year, but it's always good to be ahead of the game. And then, the MRF, that doesn't really change a whole lot, the balance sheet stays about the same as it was last year, one point two million, one point two eight million for assets, and one point two eight million for liabilities. And the MRF income statement, um, total revenues for the month were five thousand one hundred and two dollars. That basically consists of the monthly rent for the MRF, plus a little bit of interest that we get from the bank. And then the expenses are basically depreciation for the month. So we end up with expenses exceeding revenues by ninety-five dollars and thirty-eight cents for the month, so, and the red by ninety-five dollars. That's all I've got for finances, and Mr. Chairman, questions?
I have one. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any room in the MRF? You have extra room in the MRF for rental?
To rent to another entity? I haven't even considered it. I don't know if there's space.
I was just asking because someone asked me from the city, they're looking for some space, so, I don't know. They just asked me if you had some room in that building, and I was supposed to ask that question.
It's a very storage unit that we use for a lot of just paper, old paper files and stuff like that.
It's not a big space, a no garage door type thing?
Nothing vacant, so.
Okay, all right, no, just asking, because I know we got a large building, but I think it's bigger than maybe if you need extra income, and I'm pretty sure they're looking for it short term. Yeah, okay, just flushing that out, no problem.
Gabe has a question, if you have a second.
Sure.
Maybe this was covered and I didn't hear it being remote. Have we moved money into the money market accounts?
No.
That we've talked about?
We've been talking about it, unfortunately, this time of the year is just about the worst to try and get it done. What's standing in the way of getting it done right now is that we need to have time for Mark and Brianna to go, physically go to the banks that we're gonna be moving money to, and, you know, set up the accounts and sign the signature cards and stuff like that, because in order to get the rates that they advertise, you have to have a relationship with most of these banks, which means that we have to go there, set up a checking account or a money market, throw twenty-five bucks in the account, just let it sit there. You know, that's, that's been the case for every bank that I've talked to, and it ranges from twenty-five bucks to a thousand bucks, and it just has to sit there so that you can, you know, use their CDs. So, I project we're looking at probably, probably April at the latest. I think things are starting to slow down, for me anyway, with year-end stuff. And then, you know, be able to get together with Mark and Brianna, figure out a time where we can physically get out to the banks that we decide on, and set those accounts up, and then start moving the money around.
Thank you for the update. I'll just reinforce my sense of urgency on this, it's a lot of, as we know, it's a lot of liability sitting out there.
Yeah, very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update, that is all.
And the interest rates are doing pretty good right now?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the banks were looking at, what their interest rates are, so, the three of us are gonna sit down and chat about what our options are, then just go do it.
Yeah, it's, it's been widely varying, depending on the bank, and when I look at it, they go up and down, but, you know, figure out definitely some local options.
We're looking at a local bank, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Greg. Mark?
Yes, manager's report, that's page sixteen. We have some items that have been kind of on this sheet for a very long time. And, you know, the holler accounts receivable, I have a report attached to that, and Greg's gonna go over that in a minute. Holler referred to the attorney for action, we have a couple of hollers that are on our list. One of the hollers was supposed to meet with the auditor today here, this was the third time he blew her off. No call, no show, he's the highest paid owed to us. These are accounts receivables, and, you know, so, to get to the attorney and try to, my thought process is part of the ordinance for the first thing, and the second thing is that if other people find out that we're not keeping everyone's toes to the fire on equal playing field, it could cause a lot more concern. The next thing was, um, the ordinance clarification, this is something that's been on my lookout since April two thousand twenty-two. I just need to know what, get some further direction on this, how can I help? What would the, what's the board's pleasure, and how can I help you with this? Right now, I'm thinking it's a busy time of year, and maybe we could have some information soon on these items. In the two thousand twenty-two audit, we're still going at it again. We've got a, we've got a whole bunch of documents sent to us two weeks ago, and we've been very busy chasing down these things again, and we started having weekly meetings to make sure that we don't let any other thing go through miscommunications or untimely responses to get this thing done as soon as possible. I was thinking this was gonna be done by, you know, July or August, definitely before your September meeting, and I've never seen anything like this before in my life. But, to another end, I've been informed that they're not gonna be doing, this firm that we're doing is not gonna do audits anymore, so.
Oh, the auditor, okay.
So they're no longer gonna be doing audits. And to get it, to get an audit procurement process, I've done some draft, uh, request for proposals. I've got a list of auditors that are in the region that do this for municipalities, and I'm ready to go if that's the direction that the board is looking for.
Is this normal, this taking this long with the audit?
No.
I was gonna say, the city doesn't take this long for ours.
Never seen anything.
And this year, we went out to shop, we went out to bid, and we end up sticking with the one we had because, and we signed a four-year contract, so it got our price down per year because we're with them for four years. So, but ours was like seventy-five thousand for, for our audit, and then the redevelopment authority had to pay another six thousand for theirs. So, we're a larger entity, you're dealing with fourteen departments that you have to deal with.
We're paying more than we probably should.
Right.
So, and the lease, I guess we could say, I received a proposal from Casella on our transportation and disposal agreement, and the Casella lease agreement to the transfer station. Now, these things are gonna expire, the one with disposals has been expired for years. We're just going as we go, we have to take what we get. On the lease agreement to the transfer station, that's gonna expire next year.
You're gonna report what we did today? Would you like, would you like me to report what we did today?
I would love you to talk about what we talked about today.
We sat down with the mayor assistant to get the process started, it is now in our bailiwick. We are gonna put the lease together for a fifty-year lease with the city, and we're gonna put it together. Mark is gonna take the old lease, go through it, add what we need, send it to the city attorney, she'll go through her side of it, and then the two attorneys will bang it out, and then get it back to this board to agree on, and then it has to go to my board, the Board of Alderman, to approve it. And hopefully we get this done by May?
I'm saying, I'd like to get our end done by tax time.
Tax time, yeah.
And before this, before your board.
Because we can probably meet the first week of May or the second meeting in May, so, and then we get that approved. And then, um, the assistant mayor or the administrator will contact the grant writer Barbara with the double R A and Ed to get them started, and then we apply for the grant, we'll start working on the grant with their, because we have to apply it under the city of Rutland, because any grants for municipalities have to go to the parent municipality. So, Rutland will be the parent, what they call the parent municipality on the grant, so.
This is for what's on the capital plan, recycling and H H W facility.
Yep.
It's on our five-year plan and so forth. We also talked about being added to the city's paving.
Right.
Contract, so we can get that best rate.
So they're gonna look in, we're gonna look into that with the Public Works Department and see what their price, and if we can piggyback with them and get the same municipal price, that'll be good.
That'd be real good.
Which we already do now with the schools, the school and the city works together to get the municipal rate, so. Well, if it saves us, you know, you know, a couple hundred bucks a ton, it's, it's a lot, a lot of money there, so. And then the other thing is the, we also sent over to the Public Works Department of the City of Rowland is to look into engineering, which will be part of the grant when we get there, for water and sewer to come into the new plant. So you can have toilets there, so, for the employees, and a wash station for ice and hazardous material area. So we have, will cover that safety issue that we're supposed to have in place. Right now, it's all portable and it's not adequate. So, so when they put the new building in, we'll actually have a room for emergencies or a washing, washing station, so.
Sinks so you can wash your hands.
That's correct. And we're not too far away from the, the water lines going into Gleason Road, we're not too far away from the sewer line, so it's not a big deal, it's just a matter of getting to the, our responsibility is to get to the line, and then the city will hook it up, so.
There's a lot of ledge there.
There's a little ledge to deal with. So we got the ball rolling today.
And, and extra representatives.
Oh, yes, and the mayor's on notice to get his representative, he needs to appoint someone within a month.
All right.
The next, the last, as to all that stuff above, let me know if anything stands out, I'm open to direction on this movement forward, because right now, it's, it's a standstill on the first five things. On number six, the stormwater project for the MRF, we met on, last week for the pre-bid meeting. We had about four contractors show up for the meeting, and a lot of quick questions. Lot of, four local contractors, and there were about four or five that inquired about the paperwork online. So that's a good chunk of contractors interested in this in such a short time. We advertised the heck out of it, and I'm glad we did. Next thing is happening on March first. Let's, yeah, the next thing, I think next Friday, is the bid openings. It's gonna be on the fifteenth. At that time, there's gonna be an analysis of ranking the bids in fifth. We'll have that for, if, if this is something the board wishes to approve, we'll have to align a meeting up there for that, for a time directly out. And I believe this could be done by the E-Board.
When do you expect the project to start, once we get the bid in place?
They have a timeline, it's gonna be done by September, in September.
And for the folks at home, that is a requirement for us to take care of the stormwater runoff of this building that we're in, the MRF, as required by the state of Vermont, so we are, we are obligated to do this project, so.
It's no happy thing that we do have to do this, with EPA passing the new three-acre rules down to the state, and the state is picking it up, it's being passed to us and many, many other entities in Vermont. On the Excel sheet, there's ten pages of entities. The city has a ton of them also that we're gonna have to comply with.
That's correct.
Under the new MS four adoption, which is a good thing that you did, I think. You funk it into one plan and have some leeway on that.
Just so for people at home, the East Creek is just outside this building, that's why we're doing that, and it's part of the Lake Champlain initiative, so everybody up and down East Creek, or, excuse me, Otter Creek is out here, Otter Creek. Otter Creek is out here, so, it's required by the state and the federal government to, for us to comply, and and we've been building some money up to get there, so, when we get there, I believe we'll have the money to deal with that, so. It's part of the capital program.
Hey, Mark, I got one question. Back about a year ago, Steve Wilk came in and was talking about open, doing something with that jet, you know, the, down by the river there, so, for the power deal. Did you ever hear anything back from him, because that's tied into our MRF area?
No, they, they were just gonna use the land to access their land, and I hear the.
Oh, okay, that's.
Soon after that, maybe about a month or so after that, they did indicate that they were gonna do survey work and take a look at it, but I haven't heard anything from that. I was thinking about that too, because I'm seeing how he's laying out his yacht, and it's really nice, he's got things.
Well, it's, because he's in impaired water area, and the Otter Creek Basin area. I'm pretty sure he's gotta go through steps with the Agency of Natural Resources, and then the federal government, EPA, before they can get rolling it, so I'm pretty sure there's a lot of logistics and a lot of paperwork, and a lot of engineering stuff that has to get done before that actually gets approved.
It is a process.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I know, I know the city is not holding it up, because I think we signed off for him to go ahead if he wanted to, to do that, so, and probably you'll have to come back for city approval when they get down to the permit process.
Who has a big pile of rap out here?
Whereabouts do you see it? Is it on?
Right out here.
Is it on this side of the fence? Or that side?
I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, if it's on that side, it's Wilk's?
It's Wilk's, he's, that's all the, that's all the paving that they rip up when they reclaim, and he brings it in here, and he grinds it all winter long, and that's the aggregate that we put back into the pavement to put back on the road.
So that's all Wilk's.
It's all Wilk's, that saves us a little money, by the way, for him not to go into a sand pit or something to haul aggregate here. He actually reuses that and puts it back in the pavement, so, that's a pretty good deal for us.
Creative one, that's.
Yes, yep. That's all his over there, yeah. He does, he brings it in raw, and then he's grinding it down, and he has two piles next to the paving plant, and that's where he shovels it into, into the system, so. I believe he has a permit to do that with us and the state, so, I think we're cool.
I think, uh, you wanna talk both? Sure, yeah, there's actually been a few.
Updates?
There's been a few updates in the last couple days to the holler accounts receivable list. It is kind of a chance to update the form, yeah, but, um, basically Ace Carding and BK Services are both up to date through January now, so.
Oh, was, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Car?
Ace Carding and BK Services, those are both.
Good.
Through January, as of yesterday, today, I got checks from both of them. East Coast, he keeps sending us checks roughly once a month for twenty-five hundred bucks, and we, we never get a holler report from him. We haven't for months. So we just keep throwing estimates in there every month for twenty-five hundred bucks, and so, he owes, you know, around seven thousand dollars, I think, based on just estimates and what he's paying. Maybe he's doing more business than that, maybe he's doing less, we just have no way knowing, because he doesn't send in holler reports. But, what he's, what he owes has stayed the same for quite some time. He was up to like thirty thousand, and he paid a big chunk of it off last year, so it's been around seven thousand, bouncing around there for quite a few months.
So he, he's kept his deal paying every month?
Yeah.
But we still need to do the reporting.
We need to have the documentation that supports the number that he pays.
Right, we don't have any.
Can't we get the state to put enforcement from the state to get that document from him? Does, does the state need that from us?
We, we could say that, but there's also number two on my report, too.
Okay.
So, you know, he's always been on that problem child list. Hubbard's is doing really well in terms of they come in every month with their report and their payment on time, but they still owe that interest that accrued when they weren't doing as well, so, they still just have that outstanding balance due of about four thousand six hundred dollars, which is just that interest that accrued that they never paid us, that has just been lingering there. Uh, Johnson, we haven't received a report from them for a couple of years, so we have no idea what they owe, if they're even in business. They just don't communicate, they don't send in reports. Jones is caught up. Right now, our biggest problem is Martell, they're, they owe quite a bit right now, and they, we, the last report we got from them was in January two thousand twenty-three, so a little over a year ago. So we've been, again, we've been having to plug in estimates for what they do for business, so, you know, our best guess is they owe us about fourteen thousand, could be more than that, could be less than that. But they haven't paid anything on it, so we're just sitting there collecting interest and collecting estimated surcharges every month. Mercuria's are caught up now. Red Duck is caught up, Reynolds is caught up, Rutland Rubbish is caught up, they weren't really behind anyway. And Sam's and S V C are both good, and theirs are good too, so, really the only issues are Martell. You know, they owe us quite a bit, we don't know exactly how much, and, because we don't have any reports. And then East Coast, same deal.
So, Martell is where?
I think they're out.
Wells, okay.
Where's East Coast?
Right here.
Rotten Town, I think, is.
They're over on Water Street.
Is Mercuria submitting paperwork, because I see some unknowns on that.
They're, they're, uh, they, they generally report quarterly. You know, I'm, we're supposed to be doing it monthly, so I think they may have finally got a picture, because we got reports up to, I believe up to January, just recently.
Is he still in that too?
He's got behind, but they, we just got a check from them today, so they're fine.
They give you the paperwork?
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
I guess the last, the final thing is, I sent out an email to each one of you related to something that's happened in the legislature on batteries. Did everyone get that? S two fifty-two, S two fifty-two, something like that. S252, S252, something like batteries.
Senate bill.
Senate bill, yeah.
Is there a House bill to go with that?
Not yet. They had to, let me pass.
Oh, so they haven't crossed over yet?
Not yet, but the, they probably did, but I haven't heard anything.
They won't cross over until April.
Yeah.
First week in April, I believe, is crossover.
So, this is bill S254, and it's related to rechargeable batteries, and this is an extension to, we already have the new HHW EPR bill that picked up, passed last year. This is something that was overlooked. These include batteries that are in laptops and devices and so forth like that. Right now, who pays for it? Those, it's a loophole, they're trying to capture it. And these are types of batteries, look at my own batteries that cause fires, they're very dangerous. And I sent out an email talking about, with a link to all the senators, if you could say, hey, please support that, that'd be a great idea. I'm going to be sending mine out tomorrow.
So, the bill's intent is to capture this before they send the laptops off somewhere?
Right now, it's not being, no one's, no one's taking ownership of it. Someone's paying it, and, you know, it could be better. And we get a shine of light that these things are dangerous. This, this also delves into other things like, I don't know, those batteries that are in drills.
Hand tools?
Hand tools. And then getting into the, it doesn't go to the big batteries over 300 watts, but it goes into those ones that we see most commonly used in households now. I did send out the little, little piece of paper.
I did see that.
That, that, I don't know if you can see it.
Come over more.
All right.
There you go. Oh, come down now. There you are.
The pictures of those devices. If you could send that to your senator, that, that would help our effort. If anyone has any questions on this, I can talk offline individually to whatever you need to know. Sometimes it answers the question right there. It's within the sheet that I passed out.
So, what are we doing now? If I bring the batteries up to the transfer station, we deal with that?
Well, we, we, what type of, household batteries?
Or the, or the tools?
We take them.
You take, okay.
We take them as.
Good, because I got some coming up.
We take them, we put them in, it's, 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 it's non-covet e-waste, and we, we charge a little bit sometimes because it's non-covet.
Yep.
But not nearly what the cost is, not even close.
So, so when you take the laptops up there?
Yep.
The batteries go with the laptop to the company in Middlebury?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then Middlebury has to tear it apart and to deal with it?
Take the cost.
Oh. They, they must have to be making money. They got to be making money, where else they wouldn't not be doing that?
It affects the, there's a good, there's a story, a bigger story to that, where they have difficulty.
Oh.
They've had difficulty for the last several years, and this could help them keep this program going.
Okay.
Which is a good thing. A really good thing in Vermont. And that concludes my report. Right on time.
He disappeared.
Anything else on the agenda?
No, sir.
We have anybody?
He's doing what?
Putting some batteries in his hyrenade.
Say, yes.
You do take the hyrenade batteries too?
S254.
Okay.
Do we have any, anyone here from the public?
At this time, we don't.
We got the camera here, though. They're, they're here.
All right, Larry's back. Sorry. How to get batteries? No one's here from the public?
Nope.
Okay, the only thing is, I got to say is, next month, April, we elect the chair, vice chair, and E-Board members, so that'll be on the agenda for next month. And if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Second. Anybody object? Well, I want to thank everybody coming here and doing this and spending your time. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.